After you have provided your name and address, the green light at your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and you should conclude your remarks. When your time has ended, the red light will turn on, and at that time, you must take your seat. In order to maintain a respectful environment, the use of signs, clapping, cheering or booing, or other form of verbal or nonverbal communication is not allowed. Tonight's meeting is airing live on Edina TV, the city's website, and Facebook. And it will also be available online and in rebroadcast after the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Welcome to the September 28, 2022 meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We have been collecting public input through voicemail, email, and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important you know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally, regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there is one public hearing. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for this public hearing can do so by calling and enter participant passcode 326815. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address, and staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they've gone over three minutes. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you have already provided feedback. And also, please do not repeat information already presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. And so with that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will do our roll call.
Commissioner Padilla.
Present.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Al-Khair.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Agnew.
Here. Thank you. Next is the approval of our meeting agenda. I will entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our agenda for tonight has been approved. Next is our approval of meeting minutes from our regular meeting on September 14 of 2022. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes or updates to those minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our minutes from September 14 have been approved. Now, we will go into our community comment portion of tonight. So we will hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a public hearing. You may speak for up to three minutes. After giving your full name and address, the green light on your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on. And when you are out of time, the red light will turn on. So now, welcome anyone up to provide community comment tonight. All right, seeing none, I will continue on with our agenda tonight. And our main item is our public hearing for a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, and site plan with multiple variances at, I think the address is a typo in here. I think it's 6016 Vernon Avenue. And Director Teague will be presenting tonight, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you Chair, members of the commission. As mentioned, this site is located on Vernon Avenue. It's in the northwest quadrant of the city. Site's very unique. It has a zoning designation of PCD4, Planned Commercial District, which only allows gas stations, car wash, auto repair, those types of uses. Which was the, not the current use, but the previous use on the site was auto repair. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan for medium-density residential. That comp plan designation dates back to 1980, when that comprehensive plan was approved. So that conflicting comprehensive plan designation and zoning has been around a long time. So aerial of the, of the property, note that there are multifamily residential to the west, single-family homes to the north, some duplexes to the south. But generally, it is a residential area. Here is a look at the existing building on the site. So the structure was built in 1957. They did have gasoline sales on that, on the site up until the early 90s. The gas tanks were removed in 92. And one of the previous property owners has cleaned up the site. So the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is monitoring, and the site is clean for development. The applicant did go through a sketch plan review, many of you may recall. This is a look at the site plan that was considered. Note that there was a patio on the north end. The building proposed at that time was two stories. It had an office and conference room up on the upper level. So the applicant has made a number of changes since that sketch plan review. They've eliminated that second-story office. They've reduced the seating inside from 68 to 59. And they moved that patio from, away from the single-family homes to the south side of the site. So here is a look at the site plan that's proposed. So the specific request is to remodel and expand now that existing building to a 2,300-square-foot restaurant. It would have 59 indoor seats and 10 outdoor seats. So note that the patio is now located right here. As a result of that patio location, the parking areas have been divided. So one parking area comes in, in this location, and the other on the west side of the patio. Landscaping is proposed along the north lot line and a cedar fence around to the north and the west. This parking lot on the west side is proposed to be expanded right up to the lot line. It has a zero-foot setback. Let's see. A parking and traffic study was done by WSB. Chuck Rickert is on the line with us this evening, if, should you have any questions. The, the study concludes that the existing roadways can support the project. He did note some concern over parking. And in their report, they're recommending that the maximum seating capacity be limited to 53 on the site. Concern over parking on the street, Eden Prairie Road to the north. One item of note is that, in his study, they count outdoor seating. City code, we do not count outdoor seating toward the parking calculation. So that's part of the, the difference there in the staff review. So should the, should the planning commission recommend approval of the project, one of the conditions would be that the seating be limited to 53 seats. That's a combination of indoor and outdoor. Just to show you some quick renderings of what the building would look like. So you can see, this is the patio area. The remodel, and the addition would go toward the west. So the build, the addition is proposed to match the existing structure, which is code compliant. When we're adding on to buildings, we want to use like materials. So that would be code compliant. This is a quick look at the compliance table. So there's a number of variances being requested here. That patio has a one-foot setback toward Vernon. The structure setback on Eden Prairie Road. The west-side addition requires a variance. The parking and drive aisles all require variances. Many of those are existing conditions. The, the zoning ordinance requires restaurants in a PCD1 zoning district to be at least an acre in size. So there would be a, a variation there as well. I have a graphic that's going to show those variances here in a minute. So the total package that they're requesting here is an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change from that medium-density residential designation to neighborhood node, which is our small commercial node district in the comprehensive plan. A rezoning from that PCD4 to PCD1 that would allow the restaurant. And then a number of the variances. So this graphic shows the variance for the patio is to one feet, one foot to the lot line. The parking expansion has a zero-foot setback. The city code requires a 10-foot separation between a building and a parking area. This is an existing condition, but they would be continuing that condition. It's four feet. The building addition itself has a five-foot setback. Variance needed there. Also 12 feet toward the property line on Eden Prairie Road. We have a regulation that screening for trash enclosures needs a 20-foot setback. And the screening area is about 16 feet. And this parking lot along the north lot line, currently it goes right to the lot line. They're proposing a three-foot setback there. So with this request, well, really, they're requesting all three on the bottom. So the city has complete discretion whether to approve or deny this. It's the comprehensive plan that gives the city the, the complete discretion. So three issues to consider. Are the variances justified? Is the rezoning reasonable? And is the comprehensive plan reasonable? So I'll start with the variances. In this case, there is a practical difficulty, certainly. The lot is small in size, triangular in shape. It limits the building pad on this site. And we do have two street setbacks on the north and the south. So there is some practical difficulties, certainly, with developing this lot. However, the request really develops this site lot line to lot line. Doesn't provide much opportunity for a green space landscaping, separation between those residential uses. There's also a concern about maneuvering on the site, in and out, the separating of those two parking lots. If someone comes into the site, can't find a spot within that first parking field, they'd have to back out onto Vernon and then to, to access that other parking lot. So there's some concerns there as well. Are there circumstances that are unique to this property? Generally, it is unique with that shape and size. There was one lot that, that the planning commission looked at recently. That's the old Burley Salon site. That has that same PCD1 zoning designation on it. And you recall that the, the city recently approved a proposal for a four-unit townhome development there. The size of that site is just over 16,000 square feet. The size of this site is, let me back up. That site is just under 12,000 square feet. This site is a little bit larger, just over 16,000 square feet. So given the size and magnitude of the variances, concern over the lack of screening, separation from residential uses, maneuvering in and out of the site, we believe that it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Second issue is the rezoning. Again, staff doesn't support the rezoning. It doesn't meet those findings for rezoning. It's not consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Could be detrimental, given the magnitude of the variances that are requested, the lack of green spaces, space, the things that I touched on earlier. We do have a code provision that suggests that we not separate parking. So again, that's a concern. Comprehensive plan, staff doesn't support the comprehensive plan. Again, for many of those same, those same reasons, the property is just too small to, to accommodate what's being proposed here. You might note that we received probably more comments on Better Together than we have for any other project. Those that were for the project, like the neighborhood gathering space idea, the ability to walk to a restaurant, they would see this as a community gathering space for people in that area. Those against it expressed a lot of the similar, similar concerns that I went through. Too much for the site, concern about parking on the street, traffic, maneuvering, and suggests that the comprehensive plan should be followed. We counted up the numbers. There was 676 comments as of last Thursday. We've had a few come in since. 613 were for the project, and 63 were against. So staff has outlined two alternatives for the planning commission to consider. Again, this is a project where the city has complete discretion. So we've outlined findings for approval and denial. But in this case, staff is recommending denial subject to the findings that are outlined in the staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Director Teague. Please, Commissioner Strauss.
Thank you, Director Teague. Just, let's, I, I, some context, or how we got to the current situation. So this property was built, I mean, the, as an automotive, whatever the business is, in 1957?
Correct.
I mean, things had to have looked very different in that hall. I mean, was there even, that had been farmland, wasn't it? Or was there residential neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, wait. So, and then there was a gas station into the 90s. So that was basically its original and used up until the 1990s.
Yep.
Okay. Then, the, the, so then the comprehensive plans, they probably didn't come into the use of the development. Requirement for comprehensive plans probably till the 19, 1980s?
Yeah, that's the first comprehensive plan that, that we have.
Okay.
A copy of, and it did show up as medium-density.
So they looked forward and said this, it's the best, the use for the site in this vision would be resident.
Yeah.
Low denser or medium-density residential.
I'm just speculating, but I'm, I'm assuming they continue on the uses to the west as being, this site should be consistent.
And then the zoning typically, I'm, I'm thinking as it was carried, they probably looked at what was there and said, this is what's, it's now zoned as.
Exactly.
For a gas, and that's the existing zoning that, that applies even under, you know, currently. So if someone wanted to come in here and do a quick trip, I mean, or a gas station, they could plunk that down there, and that would be, if they met the, the, I mean, is that, is that too much of a stretch?
They still need to comply with.
But that's what it's zoned, that's what it's zoned for. So we're trying to move off what we believe to be a much higher, better use.
Yes, and the council now does say that we should have your zoning ordinance and your comprehensive plan should be in alignment with one another. That wasn't the case back in 1980. So we really need to resolve this. So if this site is decided that it should be medium-density residential, we should rezone it to a similar zoning designation to the property to the west, which is PRD3, Planned Residential District 3. If that scenario were to play out, they could continue to operate the site as an auto repair, or they could go to medium-density residential, which would allow four units on that site.
Yeah, I, I just want to like get some idea of like, what do we, we throw out one thing, and is this what we want to be left with? Is that choices and stuff like that? But that's, I think that's, that's, that's all I'm looking for right now. Thank you.
Director Teague, thank you. My question is about the new parking ordinance and how this either complies or does not comply, or is it even required to meet the new ordinance?
Yeah, so this application was made before the ordinance went into effect. But you recall this, we changed it to calculate it based on square footage. It does comply with that ordinance regulation. So it complies with city code either way. But again, we don't count outdoor seating in that calculation. I think that, that's factored in with the, the parking consultant's conclusions.
Commissioner Padilla?
Just a quick question to follow up on Commissioner Strauss's about plunking a gas station down there. There's been all the remediation. There's no more underground gas tanks or anything there. Remediation has been complete.
Correct, that's my understanding, yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thanks, Dr. Teague, for laying it out for us. Just a question on the variances. So I could see some of the variances would be reduced, you know, like zero feet, I think, to the west side, one foot to Vernon. If that were to be approved, is there any concerns with safety, underground, gas lines, wire lines, service lines? Anything like that, that would be an issue if those variances were to be approved?
Yeah, no, those types of things should be done within the right-of-way. I don't believe there's any, our engineering department would have flagged if there's any type of public utilities running through there. So as long as they're within their own property, it should be okay in, in regard to some of those things. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Teague. Just to follow up on an earlier question. So the staff report suggested that we should, and you mentioned it a few minutes ago, the potential for a zoning change for this lot. The staff report said that it would be wise for the city to, if we have a comprehensive plan that says it's multifamily residential, that we should change the zoning to PRD3. Now, is that something that we should, could, or should take up as a planning commission? Or is that handled in a different process?
Yes, so my thinking initially was we could handle it under this process. And I consulted with the city attorney, and he advised not to. If we decide, if this project is denied, we would need to go through a separate process to rezone it to MDR, or, yeah, the, the, to rezone the site to PRD3 to match that adjacent zoning. Because we didn't advertise this as a proposal to rezone to that designation. So what we would have to do is, would be a completely different process to rezone it.
Okay, but that would be a planning commission activity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Director Teague, one more question. If we were to change the zoning from PCD4 to PCD1, would the issue of the separate parking lot still be a concern that has to be resolved?
It is certainly a concern, yes.
Would it have to connect it for it to be possible to do it to PCD1?
Well, it, it could be done in this configuration, you know, with all those variances that we're granting. It's not recommended by the county, and I know our engineering department has some concerns with it as well. So should you decide that you wanted to support the project, you could recommend, you know, could be the patio's eliminated, and there's a connection through there. I don't know what the solution is, but it could potentially be a, a condition to not have two separate parking lots. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. What use is allowed today without any zoning or comprehensive plan updates?
An auto repair shop. They could continue to operate as is in the existing building.
Okay. I also have a question about parking on streets. What is the city policy around that? Is that allowed?
We do have parking restrictions in regard to overnight parking, those types of things. We don't, we don't have a specific written policy that commercial use can't utilize city streets. I know it's been a concern in the past when we've considered similar restaurant types. I'm thinking of the 44th and France Restaurant, where they didn't have enough parking, and parking was going to occur in the street. It just seemed that the council wasn't willing to grant variances as if the result is on-street parking in residential areas.
And so in this area, which streets around this site would allow parking today?
So you couldn't park on Vernon Avenue. We've had some conversations with the county about, would they allow that? And they've been telling us no. So the parking would occur on Eden Prairie Road, behind the building. And you'd have to be first-time goers to the restaurant. May not be able to find that right, right away. But people familiar with the neighborhood would know that's available back there.
And a lot of parking questions. Is that legally allowed? Like, are cars allowed to park on that street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had one technicality question. In the variance table, you show acreage in one column and square feet in the other. Do you on the top of your head know how many square feet are in an acre?
43,560.
Thank you. All right, you passed the test. Any other questions before we move to our applicant? All right, thank you, Director Teague.
Good evening. My name is Chris Davis. I live at 6637 Parkwood Road. I'm an Edina guy. I'm happily married to my Edina High School sweetheart, Margaret. We have four children whom we love very much, although we like them to varying degrees, depending on the day and their attitude. I've lived in Edina almost all of my 50 years, except for those few years that we spent in the 763, when Margaret and I were first married and we couldn't afford an Edina home with a yard for our dog. In 2003, with two Edina partners, I founded an IT consulting company called Concord. We called it Concord because one of my partner's home was the business address, and he lived a block away from Concord Elementary. That company, Concord, grew and moved into the Edina Executive Plaza and lived there until 2010, when we bought a building on 169 and Hopkins, a pitching wedge away from Edina. I sold my ownership in that business in 2021 and have been working on what's next. In the meantime, my good friend and Edina High School classmate, Marty Collins, came to me with the idea to partner on the purchase of Kevin Key's. Marty owns McCoy's in St. Louis Park and Nolo's in the North Loop. The top idea that Marty and I had in buying the place was to be a restaurant. But we knew it could be a few other things as well. Car wash, gas station, car or motorcycle repair shop, or as the city seems to want, housing. The most fun to us felt like a restaurant. So we found an architect that had done a gas station/restaurant transition before, Christian Dean. Christian designed Colita in Minneapolis. He drew up some plans, and we invited the closest neighbors to an open house to see what we were thinking. 5,000 feet from the location, I believe, is what we sent invites to. Well, the open house went well, and we received a ton of positive support from the local community. We also received negative feedback from a few adjacent neighbors. That it would be too loud, the restaurant would be open too late, and there'd be parking problems. We shared the support and the concerns with the planning commission prior to our sketch plan review in October of 21. And that meeting was positive. We left feeling that the restaurant had a good chance. However, at the city council meeting a few weeks later, the tone had changed. It had become political. The anti-restaurant people had mobilized and sent many comments, emails, et cetera, to the city council. In fact, council member Pierce commented that he didn't recall a project that had received so many comments, and to have them all be negative. Well, we left that meeting discouraged, and we thought more about what to do with the space. But we kept coming back to the restaurant idea. Our supporters continued to encourage us. It felt like the community wanted a neighborhood restaurant on the west side of Edina. But maybe we were wrong. So we decided to create a poll and ask our neighbors and fellow residents what they wanted us to put in this location. We again mailed postcards to the closest 5,000-feet residents and shared the poll by social media and word of mouth. We shared our top ideas and asked them to vote. And the results were overwhelming. Opened from January 18 to March 28, the poll was, we limited the responses to one response per IP address in order to avoid duplicates. There were a total of 2,159 votes. 2,083 of them voted for Edina. 2,083 of those were for a restaurant. Twenty-one for a car wash, 16 for an auto repair, 39 for affordable housing. We received hundreds of comments and we shared those with the planning commission in our application. You guys see those we sent through, I hope? By the way, reading through the more than 600, and Director Teague brought up the numbers, but it looked like quite a landslide victory for the restaurant wanters on the better-together Edina site as well. The two most common comments that we've seen would be our, number one, we would love a neighborhood restaurant that we could walk to, and two, please don't let it be housing. After gathering the results of the poll, we felt that we owed it to our neighbors and our Edina community to try for a restaurant. We met individually with council members and we drew up new smaller restaurant plans to address neighbor concerns. We removed the second story, we reduced the number of seats by one-third, that includes indoor and outdoor, and we moved the patio away from the neighborhood and onto the Vernon side of the building. And yet, reading the staff report on our application, it seems that the city staff does not recommend approval. That's disappointing. However, the report says that if our plans were properly designed, it could fit the space. We know that the site is awkward and requires variances. We know that parking could be an issue, even though our plan does meet the required number of parking spaces. But for a restaurant to be feasible on this site, we need the city's partnership and support. Not just your approval that we have jumped through the right hoops, but your partnership and support. Work with us. With your partnership, we can come up with the proper design. The Edina community wants a restaurant here. Help us make that happen. You have the power to recommend this zoning change to the city council, and we ask that you do that. Listen to the people. Listen to the residents of your city. They want a neighborhood restaurant. And they don't want multifamily housing. They want a local place that they can walk and bike to. They don't want to drive into Eden Prairie or Hopkins or Minnetaka. You know, Olive's Pizza opened a few months ago on Bren Road, and it's been wonderful to go there and see friends and neighbors and see people walking and biking. We've seen families of five and six walking to the restaurant on the streets. And that's what we imagine with our restaurant. A neighborhood family restaurant that many people will walk or bike to. A place where your teenager could work as a server and where you see your friends and neighbors. This won't be a rock and roll venue. It will be a small neighborhood restaurant. This is Edina. People have jobs and families and things to get done. It's not going to be a party scene. Plus, we live nearby. We're neighbors and homeowners. We love our community, we love our neighborhood, and we don't want to create anything that would detract value. We want to add value. If there are issues as we move along in the life of this restaurant, we will work to fix them with the neighborhood and with the city. We can figure this out. But if a restaurant doesn't get the approval from the city, well, a car wash or car repair shop is next on our list. Is that what we want? A neighborhood Valvoline or an automatic car wash? It fits the current zoning, and from our perspective, it'll probably make money. Not nearly as fun and not quite the gathering place that the community wants, but the place is going to be something. The city staff suggests that this property should be medium-density housing, like a fourplex, because that's what the comprehensive plan calls for. But according to city staff, that comp plan designation has been in place since at least 1980. It's outdated. How much has changed since 1980? How many multifamily dwellings were there in Edina in 1980? How many multifamily dwellings are there today? I don't know the answer, but I can tell you what we've heard from the comments of the community, our community does not want or need more multifamily housing. So to those who think that the affordable housing option that we mentioned in our poll was a scare tactic, you're kind of right, because we won't do that to our neighborhood. But the next owner might. And depending how this plays out with the city, selling this property might be our best choice. It's been almost one year since we bought this property from Kevin, and in that time, the Davis and Collins families have spent over $50,000 in carrying costs and countless hours. Those costs include taxes, insurance, mortgage, utilities, lawn mowing, sign-making, and postcards. We've spent money on design and architecture iterations. We've spent nearly $20,000 on environmental studies and remediation projects dictated by the MPCA. We paid for an $8,000 traffic study required by the city of Edina and $3,800 in application fees to the city. And we finally made it here to square zero. We are asking you to partner with us, to make this restaurant something that our community can be proud of. Do what the community wants and support the zoning change in the comp plan amendment. Let's agree to make this a restaurant and table the site plan so we can sit down and work directly with the city on details like setbacks and walking paths and parking lot turning radiuses. Please make the important decision today to support the zoning and comp plan change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can start with some questions with whoever wants to go first. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, appreciate the comments. I'd love to get your perspective on just the operations, you know, how do you envision the restaurant, you know, the hours of operation, the type of menus? Is it family-friendly? You know, just kind of talk to us about the experiences that you hope to have there.
I'll let Marty Collins answer that. But first, I got to say that we don't have the restaurant concept completely baked yet, and that's partially because we don't know how big it can be. It's really kind of hard to figure out what the program is. But anyway, here's Marty.
I agree. It's hard to say what we're going to do if we don't know if we're going to do it, right? So we could be a taco shop, we could be a burger shop, we could be a breakfast place, we could be an ice cream place, we could be a candy store that serves ice cream. So what we can do is still available to us, but we don't know if we can do it yet. So we can't answer honestly what we're doing yet because we don't know.
Just as a quick follow-up then, so let's just assume that it gets approved. How do you go about getting that feedback? Is it engagement with the neighbors to figure out what should we build here? Or how do you guys come up with the ideas to design? Like what's that process like?
Well, if I think about it, we're already stuck down to like almost 60 seats, so whatever we do isn't going to make a lot of money anyways. But it would be nice to have something that the community wants. I envision burgers and ice cream cones. You know, chili dog and a tasty freeze, sounds perfect to quote John Mellencamp. But yeah, I guess we could do whatever we want. We can create great restaurants. I've been doing it forever. It's not hard. What is hard is saying you just can't do a restaurant. But once I get the green light, we will do something that people love and we will make sure it's awesome.
Please, go ahead. Commissioner Alkire.
Thanks for the presentation. I heard the description of the concept as a neighborhood restaurant, neighborhood gathering And I heard the recitation of the results of your outreach work. So in your survey, did you do cross tabs to identify the various levels of support or non-support in the neighborhood for this neighborhood restaurant compared to people farther away? If that question makes sense.
Yes, I mean, it went out to the closest 5,000 square feet.
Could you please come up to the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you say it again?
Sure, so the way I heard the project described was it went out to 5,000 feet.
Yep.
It was 5,000 feet. It was some, okay. And also was communicated on social media and more broadly.
Correct.
So I'm interested in your results from the neighborhood, because we're talking about a neighborhood resource, neighborhood restaurant.
We did not accept any, we did not let anyone come in that was not within the neighborhood. Everyone had like the area codes were verified.
I think what you're asking is which of the local residents were in support versus not in support? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah. Adjacent, there are a couple of property owners that are not happy about the idea. But there are a lot in that block that are very excited about it. So they're within two or three houses, four houses. I can, you know, name the families that are very excited about this, that are, you know, 30-second walk from the restaurant. So yeah, we got the addresses. We didn't share the addresses with you, obviously, because it seems like a breach of privacy. But yeah, we have addresses. We know where these people were responding from. And there are more people on the surrounding Eden Prairie Road and Kmart Drive that are for the project than are against it.
Okay, and as a follow-up, did in your outreach, did you discern a difference between support if you were thinking about a restaurant with a liquor license that's open till midnight compared to a restaurant that's hamburgers and ice cream that's not open till midnight?
We did not.
Okay.
We did not.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I would say either for the applicant or for staff. Please. This is a question for staff. So the parking, the number of parking spaces is dictated by the number of seats. So if the concept were more of a sort of a bakery, coffee shop, ice cream shop that doesn't have the number of seats, the parking correlates with that? So like kind of a drop-in pickup kind of stuff, sit at a bar stool or something might be different?
That's correct. It would be based on square footage as a retail use.
Director Teague, I have a question really about process. So Mr. Davis, I think, suggested that, you know, one option tonight would be to decouple the comp plan and the rezoning from the site plan review. Is that something that the planning commission has done in the past? Is that something that we can do? Or are we, regardless, tying tonight, if there were to be comp plan and zoning changes, tying it to the site plan that is also up for review?
I think in the past, the planning commission has wanted to see what they're approving rather than just granting a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning without knowing the exact detail. So that hasn't been the past practice. That said, you could. Then it's a matter of are the variances reasonable? It kind of puts you in a little more difficult position, knowing you've changed the comprehensive plan, you've changed the zoning, but you don't know the exact use and is what they're going to come back with, does that fit? A little harder to say no at that point, too.
So I have a question, kind of pertaining to that. Is there a possibility that we can plan meetings with the city kind of in the midst of moving on to a city council hearing and come up with a plan? Because I feel like we're pretty close and the city has alluded to that in their report that, you know, if this, then we could support it. And if it was just properly designed, so, you know, I feel like we're right there. If we can just get some time to maybe sit down with some people from the city and figure out what it is that's going to be acceptable, maybe come up with a plan.
I'm not sure staff has said that we're close. I think in general, the idea was potentially a restaurant may work in a residential district if it's properly screened, meets code, that kind of thing. I wasn't suggesting that it's, that this specific plan is close.
Director Teague, if we were to decouple the two and approach a site plan at a later date, walk me through your thought process in saying we wouldn't have as much control over it at that point in time.
Well, so if the site is reguided to neighborhood node and rezoned to commercial, yeah, then you just have the zoning standards to uphold. And you still can say no to a project that's similar to what's proposed here.
Okay. And then can you also, for everyone's benefit, kind of walk through the typical process to do comprehensive plan changes? Like, let's pretend that we don't do it here tonight. When would be our next opportunity as a planning commission to think strategically about this site and what should be there?
Yes, so, you know, we just amended, we just approved the comprehensive plan back in 2019, 2020. But the Met Council now says that you should bring your zoning ordinance into compliance with your comprehensive plan. So we really should, we should take care of that. Either rezone to be consistent with the comprehensive plan or amend the comprehensive plan to be consistent with the zoning. So we really do need to do that. We've got a proposal here for the comprehensive plan amendment, so, you know, if approved, then we would be, the zoning and the comprehensive plan would match.
And with the comprehensive plan update that happened in 2018, was this site in particular intentionally considered?
I don't recall specifically looking at this. It was really just a continue, this is what it was guided 10 years ago, so we just continued with that same use. I don't recall looking specifically at this site.
And given that you mentioned that this was the initial use guided in the first 1980s comprehensive plan, it sounds like it's, and I guess, sorry, you'd probably have to go and look through every document, but it sounds like it's unlikely that it was ever changed away from that or ever really intentionally looked at with a plan.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, just a quick question for the developer team. I know we have the situation with the patio splitting the lot into two parts. You know, this was initially a gas station, cars would come in from one side typically and then leave through the other side, and it's going to be redeveloped for a different use. Have you looked at designs as you were kind of putting this together, going back and forth with your design team of putting the patio, you know, somewhere else on the property ideally? What would allow for those two lots to be connected?
Well, initially, we had it on the north side of the lot, and that was a large patio and left the parking lot open. But the neighbors didn't like that idea and want people too close to their hood. But yeah, we could, we could connect that again. We'd lose seats because of how tight it is to come around that portion of the building. And we would lose parking, Christian says as well, if we, if we got that patio out of that spot, we'd probably lose a couple parking spots, lose a few seats.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, then we will move, go to our public hearing. First, we will hear from those in person, and then we will hear from residents who would like to provide testimony remotely. So I will give that number now, and I think we'll hold it up on the screen. But again, I will hear from those in person. But again, I will hear from those in person first. So to participate, call in now at 888-504-7949 and enter participant passcode 326815. And again, for everyone, everyone will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. For those in person, please give your full name and address, and then the green light will turn on. When the orange light turns on, you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the red light turns on, you are out of time. For those calling in, staff member Liz Olson will let you know that if you've gone over three minutes. Remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony. If you've already provided comments via voicemail, bettertogether-edina.org or via email, please call in or provide testimony tonight if you have new comments or information to bring forward. And so with that, I will invite, I assume that most, there are some people here to provide some public testimony. So I don't know what the most effective way is, but we will just start. If anyone would like to come up to one of the podiums and begin.
Can I just have one?
Yes, you can use the table and then just use the mic that's provided there and you can speak into that. And then your lights will be provided right at the front of that table. And then flip it around, please. It's upside down.
I just wanted to, my name is Matthew Pepper. I live at 6004 Eden Prairie Road. There was a question about the cross tabs, sir. And my neighbors and I did those cross tabs. There are three roads that are really going to be affected here. Eden Prairie, KMR, and Highwood. Highwood is the one that's immediately to the east that would be used as parking as well. So we don't have access to their survey because it's their survey. As neighbors that oppose a project chose not to participate in that survey due to the biased wording that was inherent in it. But we all did participate in Better Together Edina. And so I converted your PDFs to Word, and anyone else can do this. If you search for Eden Prairie, KMR, and Highwood, there are 58 individuals. If you count folks that signed twice, a partner couple, 58. 16 are for, 42 oppose. Less than one in three from those three streets are for this restaurant. So the second point I want to make is just based on this picture. This is Eden Prairie Road. The yellow tab is where the restaurant would be. The red tab is our house. And this, this picture is from the noontime rush or the lunchtime rush on Monday. So the important thing to notice here, there are no sidewalks. And so when that parking spills over in our neighborhood, any passenger that arrives is going to be walking through our front lawns, our front lawns. In this red tab, all the bedroom windows are in the front, in the condos and in our houses. So please don't approve something that is going to put parking right there and have folks walking through our front lawns late in the evening. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you.
... A safe place to raise a family, a place to work productively, a good return on our investment, a beautiful neighborhood. These are the things we value and I'd bet represent what most people in this room value. Every single one of those values is threatened by the development of a restaurant across the street from my family and my home. Our street will undoubtedly be used for parking as the number of parking spaces is inadequate for patrons and staff. An establishment serving alcohol will lower inhibitions of all those exiting. I work as an emergency physician, and I am very familiar with the consequences of drunk driving and every other unintended consequence of alcohol. Will they see my son racing across the street for an errant kickball? Will they break for my daughter biking back from Valley View Middle School? Noise pollution will make recovery sleep even more difficult, which any shift worker can tell you is already tough. Our home is our largest piece of equity. This is an investment we made carefully and deliberately. This house has been a source of comfort, calm, and joy for us, and it has been for eight years. We ask Edina to adhere to its comprehensive plan in which it lays out how residential areas should be used. We understand that change will arrive, but advocate for maintaining zoning for a medium-density residential area. Ask yourself, if this were proposed across the street from your home, how would you respond? I ask you to recognize and protect the values that we share of safety, productivity, return on investment, freedom from pollution, and not support rezoning this property for restaurant use. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Knapp, and I live at Parkwood condominium 6005 Eden Prairie Road, Unit 207. I'm a licensed real estate agent. I work in both the commercial and residential fields. Before we moved back to Minnesota in 99, I practiced law in Washington DC focusing on real estate, banking, and business development. My purpose in talking to you this evening is to suggest to you that there's a perfectly reasonable alternative use for this property other than the proposed restaurant development. As the staff recommended, probably the best use of this property would be to develop it with townhouse units, four townhouse units. As a general rule, a residential developer, a residential developer is looking for their land acquisition costs to be less than 25% of the overall sales price of the project. Since this development group paid $900,000 for the land, that means they would have to generate $3.6 million from the sale of any residential units for it to be a feasible I'd suggest to you, taking a look at the recent townhouse development on Hankerson by Danae Holmes across from Jerry's. There are four, four townhouse units there. Three have been currently sold, one remains to be on the market. The total value of those four projects is $3.9 plus million. So from an economical standpoint, this is a feasible proposition to develop it with four townhouse units. And as you can see, because the cost of the acquisition, the acquisition cost of the land, it's not going to be affordable housing. So if, if it's economically feasible to develop this property with four townhouses, the next question is, can you fit them on that funny little lot? If you take a look at the footprints for each of the four units built by Danae Holmes, each footprint was 942 square feet. That's an overall footprint for the four townhomes of 3,768 square feet. That's less than 23% of the entire site. So I'm sure with a little clever planning, the four townhomes could fit on that site. The long and short of it is that a reasonable use exists that's much more compatible with the character of the neighborhood. It's young families, it's old people like me. The effect of having cars parked all up and down Eden Prairie Road is really not very desirable and will definitely affect home values in the area. The addition of four high-priced townhomes over there would definitely increase the prices of house, or benefit the price of houses on that street.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the time to speak.
My name is Samuel Reed. I live at 6012 Eden Prairie Road, and I can throw a frisbee from my driveway to the former Kevin Key's property. I represent myself, my wife, and my two children. We think the proposed development is wrong for our neighborhood. To try and wedge in a restaurant with a bar, according to the last schematic I saw, likely dependent on alcohol sales to remain viable and likely to operate late into the evening, this does not fit with the residential quiet character that we enjoy. I do not want boisterous noise from the patio. I do not want overflow parking on our street and in front of my house. And I do not want buzzed or inebriated patrons, strangers filtering through our neighborhood, whether it be on foot, bicycle, or in the car. So to those of us who live here at ground zero, this is not a family-friendly project. This is not a residential perk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just got a new knee, so I'm not as ambulatory as I usually am. My name is Nancy Shear. I live at 6105 Eden Prairie Road. I am a lifetime Edina resident, and I spent nine years on the Planning Commission, as Carrie knows, so I appreciate what you're all evaluating this evening. I'm opposed to the proposed restaurant development on the former Key's site on Vernon Avenue. While the concept of something on the west side for people to eat is, I know, something that is desirable to a lot of people, I simply do not think that this is a proposal that is correct for this particular parcel of land. The developers are asking for excessive setback reductions on all sides of the parcel. There clearly will be insufficient parking for the proposal, both for patrons and for staff. We haven't talked much about staff. I think the original proposal said three staff members. I don't know how you would operate a restaurant like this with three staff members. Additionally, nobody's talked about it, but I, I think about other restaurants that I, that are in neighborhoods or in nodes that I've been visiting. We have delivery trucks, we have garbage trucks. I don't quite know how that operates, given the parking configuration of this particular If we look at parking on both sides of my street, Eden Prairie Road, down KMR, possibly down Highwood, potential liquor licensing, light pollution as we're open late in the evening, these all really represent radical changes to the quality of a completely residential, quite quiet, almost cul-de-sac neighborhood. I actually drove around Edina, checked my memory. I don't know of any other 100% residential neighborhood that isn't either designated as a node or in a small commercial mall or a commercial mall situation that has a lot of adjacent parking. The Roadhouse, for example, has access to all the parking that is in that little mall next to it. I don't know of any one that is 100% in a residential area that the city has proposed that we put a restaurant on. This would be a first, and I really think the value of all of the adjacent properties would be adversely affected with a restaurant in this particular parcel. Of greatest consideration to me, as a former planning commissioner and as a lifetime Edina resident, is the need to amend the comprehensive plan. I served on one of the committees that put one version together, and I know that we took all of the public testimony, we had residents involved. I didn't take the creation of that document lightly at all. And I think when we tell a neighborhood what it, we are designating it as and what are we, we are guiding it as, the neighbors and the city residents have a right to rely on that as they do their own planning and purchasing of real estate going forward. So given all of that, I would encourage you not to approve this project. I think it is simply not on the right parcel of land. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Dudek. I live at 6021 Vernon Avenue, which is across the street from the property we're talking about. My husband and I, he now is deceased, we moved into our property in 1968. That means I've been there for 54 years. I, we have an acre, I have an acre there. We've always set us a little bit of heaven, and it is. In 1994, we bought the property right next to us, adjoining it, at 6017 Vernon Avenue, just under an acre. So I have two acres over there. Maybe they should be talking to me instead of this darn little piece of pie. I'm 85 years old, so I'm making my way to heaven, but I'm not there yet. I don't know if I'm for the, for the proposal or against the proposal. I can't tell you that. All I know is that when we moved in, the gas station was there. And when they had to dig the tanks out, we had a well dug at both properties. They maintained it for 20 years to see that the water was all okay. Then Kevin bought the property. Kevin is like our son, just a wonderful person. My concern is, on, on one of the drawing that you had, they had 6016 across the street. That is not right. My property is 6017 Vernon Avenue. So even when Kevin was there, I had one, excuse my French, heck of a time, I went on to something else, crossing the street because of the traffic. Now it's no parking on Vernon. Speed limit is 40 miles an hour. We have bike lanes, we have a walking path past both of my houses. When I would go across to be at Kevin, sometimes it took me three, four, five minutes to cross the street. My other concern that's not been brought up, it, well, it's a liquor license, but I'm concerned about our police shortage. I know there's, there just, you can't tell me there's not going to be, something happen there once in a while. And so those are my concerns. I, I really wonder about the value of my property. It's a, a large chunk of weeds and seeds and, and grass. And so I, when we first moved in, that was Highway 169 for about six months, and then it turned into Highway 1, or County Road 158 and then Vernon Avenue. So I'm well aware of all the things. Because I'm old, getting used to change is not easy for me. So I'm, I'm concerned about the police walking across Vernon Avenue, the value of my property. I see the light is on. Time for a glass of wine. Good night.
My name is Sarah Erwin, and I live at 6025 KMR Drive, which is about 350 feet away from the proposed site with my husband and our three children. We moved to Edina seven years ago, and our prior home was located on a street that was often a cut through for fast-driving cars. One of the main appeals of our current home is that it was, it's located on a quiet horseshoe that hardly gets any through traffic. I oppose this project, and I'm most concerned about the manner in which it's been handled by the developers and the lack of communication with the nearby neighbors who would be most affected, myself included. The adjacent neighbors were not adequately consulted at the beginning or throughout the process. The only time our input was invited was October of 2021, when we were informed by postcard of a meeting to hear some exciting news about the future of Kevin Key's auto body. Unfortunately, the meeting was scheduled for the Wednesday evening of MEA week, well, a time that's well-known for many families to either be out of town or on their way out of town. My family had long-scheduled plans, and we were unable to attend that meeting. After presenting the sketch plan last year, the developers were giving, given some thoughtful feedback from this committee and also from city council. One council member, echoed later by others, had these words to say. Come up with a One council member, echoed later by others, had these words to say, "Come up with a plan the neighborhood could get excited about. Go back to the drawing board. Ask the neighbors to help come up with solutions." The new project narrative states that changes had been made to the plan, quote, "after consulting with some neighbors who oppose the project," end quote. To my knowledge, only one opposed neighbor who had a pre-existing relationship with the developers was contacted for his thoughts, and no others were consulted. Instead, the developers cast a wide net and were easily able to gain a popular vote. Most who responded within the three-mile radius they reached out to were reliably excited about a nearby, but not in their front or backyard, restaurant. Their website and their online survey asked people from four options what they would like to see on the spot, with one option being, quote, "affordable multi-unit housing, four-to-eight plex," end quote. In their narrative to the city, the wording of this option was changed to just read, quote, "multifamily housing." This language used on the survey, I feel misrepresented the housing option to those who participated in their survey, clearly casting their restaurant as the most favorable choice. While there have been changes made to the plan, the significant issues of overflow parking, late nights, and the full liquor license persist. Parking's too limited. It will spill out on the nearby residential streets. The narrative says the hours are shortened, but there's no listing of what the hours will be. The revised plan gives the impression of a coffee or sandwich shop at the developer's state of last year that Key wants a full liquor license. Overall, as a neighbor whose daily life would be directly affected by this restaurant, I would have appreciated a much more open, problem-solving, solutions-based approach from the developers, much like city leadership asked and requested of them last year. But because this was not the case, I ask tonight that you not recommend this project to City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for being here, and thank you for doing what you do. We know this is not always a fun job. My name's John Walborn. I live at 6008 Eden Prairie Road, directly across the street from the project. And yes, I am the one that knows Mr. Davis well. We were next-door neighbors for a long time. You all gave great feedback on October 27, 2001, to this group. You asked would it change the essential character of the neighborhood. Okay? Mr. Miranda, you questioned the traffic flow, the increase in traffic. You were concerned about the impacts to the climates, several others. Commissioner Bennett had concerns about the screening and several other areas. You pitched back recommendations. Those recommendations have not been taken to heart. They eliminated the second-floor conference room of the restaurant. They eliminated nine seats, and they swapped the patio for the dumpster. That's what they've done. Okay? That's not what you sent them back to do. The fatal flaws you all pointed out directly are still not resolved, and Director Teague's report from Friday of this week confirms that. You've heard tonight about the parking impacts to residential neighborhoods, and we've emailed you photographs of restaurants in the area that border residential neighborhoods so that you could see, in reality, what that looks like. Okay? Your staff's report says this restaurant, as proposed, would be detrimental to the surrounding residents. You've heard about the survey that suggested the city wants this restaurant based on the statistical analysis and feedback given through your website, along with the clear-leading aspects of the survey they released. Everyone in Edina wants more restaurants over car washes and affordable housing. I would have stipulated that and saved them money. The planning process exists to maintain our city and prevent convenience of amenity from advancing over property rights and strategic planning. You are given the authority to recommend zoning based on, but not limited to, six factors, and your staff report fails all six of those items: your standards, your rules, your people, your report. Simply stated, you all produce and manage a comprehensive plan. You implement and enforce zoning setbacks and parking rules. You retain a full staff of subject matter experts to govern this process, and you created the sketch plan process and this forum we're using tonight so that petitioners and impacted community members would have transparency and be able to articulate their views. This governance exists to ensure that every voice is heard and that it does not become a popularity contest. Based on your report by your subject matter professionals, the flaws that you pointed out multiple times have not been addressed. Forwarding this project with a positive recommendation would mean that you all, as a commission, are ignoring all of the controls that you have established for the process. Pay attention to your report. Staff believes the variances requested with this report are excessive for the site, do not meet the variance criteria outlined, and would have a negative impact on the surrounding residential properties. Commissioners, this project will turn the neighborhood. My metal shop teacher taught me something in 1979. If it don't fit, son, it don't fit, and this don't fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeremy Cass. I live on 6016 Kmart Drive with my wife and two children, five houses away from the site. We are against this proposal. Our neighborhood is a quiet residential area. There's insufficient room, inadequate parking, and no buffer with the adjacent residential area for a neighborhood node. The other neighborhood nodes are different, larger commercial areas with existing retail. The overflow parking from staff and patrons will fill up adjacent streets, Eden Prairie Road and Kmart Drive. With cars parked and the street full, school buses will have difficulty passing. It'll be dangerous for the children and adults walking and bicycling in our street, walking their dogs. The negative impacts of this project will disproportionately affect the residents on the adjacent streets. Everyone loves the idea of more places to eat, drink, and gather, but wouldn't be so happy if the patrons and staff parked in front of their house, woke up their children late at night, and created increased traffic and noise coming back to their cars. We see overflow parking from Hilltop and Red Cow filling neighborhood streets, and we don't want to see this on Kmart Drive and Eden Prairie Road. Thank you for listening to my comments and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
My name is Todd Young. I'm with 2511 Highway Drive West. I'm an architect by trade, and I also, my family's been in the restaurant business for over 20 years. When I look at this project, I see it as an overreach on many levels, much of which has been discussed here right now, so I won't reduplicate that. The one thing I would ask about the traffic study, although it said that traffic is supported by the roads that are there, it does not address the parking issue, and it does not address the fact that one of the things that the parking zoning ordinance don't look at right now is that with the advent of COVID, there's a lot of takeout traffic that comes to these restaurants. I've done it at Hilltop myself, and what ends up happening is there's not room for those people in parking, so they will go to the street because it's more convenient. Where do the people that are for DoorDash and all that going to go? It's not going to work with the parking they have right now. That site plan does not work. It's going to force people to back into traffic, back into the road, so that is a problem in and of itself. The other thing is, doing this in a residential area as a node, it doesn't have the infrastructure. There's not the lighting, the traffic control, or any of the pedestrian ways that need to service this building. This neighborhood has no sidewalks in it anywhere, so parking on the street is going to drive people into the street. They're already doing it, walking their dogs with families, and if we're going to send inebriated people into this neighborhood buzzing through it, it's already, Highwood Drive is already, traffic is, moves fairly quickly through this neighborhood, and now if you've got inebriated people doing that at a pace, kids, dogs, people that are walking are going to be affected by that. So I oppose this project on a lot of levels. I also, in my letter to you, did a two-hour study of what you can do for residential. If you want to look at what can be done there, take a look at the letter that was sent that shows a layout. You can easily fit that in here, and as the other gentleman stated, the economics of this can work. You can see it right up by Jerry's. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Scott Forbes. First time ever coming to City Hall, living in Edina for about 35 years. I'm coming from a little bit different direction in that I'm kind of interested on how some of these processes work. I live on Saxley Road, which is about three or four blocks to the north of the proposed restaurant, and I guess I'm just fundamentally against it. But the thing I don't understand is how a restaurant developer and company and business would come in here, especially if he's a resident of Edina, knowing that what he wants to do and pay whatever they paid for this lot, there isn't a single thing they're doing that fits within the regulations, or I might use the word laws, of what they can do. They know they can't build a restaurant. They're asking for variances, and I would question what a variance is. You know, from 30 feet to one foot, that's not my idea of a variance. That's an idea of just throwing out the rule. From 25 feet to five feet, again, that's more throwing out the rule than asking for a little bit of help. And they're looking for variances on all four sides, plus they're building something that's not allowed. And they come in here, and I guess, you know, there's an old saying, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission. They bought this, I guess, thinking and knowing that they wanted to build a restaurant, knowing that a restaurant's not allowed there. They're asking for all these changes, you know, basically, to me, they're asking to just throw out the rulebook so they can do what they want to do, because that's what they want to do, I guess. So I'm here more to see how government works, you know? You've heard tons of testimony about, not testimony, about the neighborhood idea. I've certainly seen Edina, over the 30 years plus I've lived here, allow a lot of variances. I'm not sure I've ever seen one like this, and I've never been close enough to, you know, to get personally involved in it. But I just don't understand the thinking process of businesspeople that come in here knowing everything they want to do is not allowed, and then ask for your permission to do it, and I hope you don't give it to them, because that starts changing what Edina is, and we all opt here because of what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Good evening, and again, thank you for what you do. My name is Mary Caneely Burdis. I live at 620 Kmart. I've lived in Edina my entire life, only because I'm older than these guys. And I guess, not to repeat anything you've said before, because it's all good information. I grew up when kids went everywhere on a bike. I went up to the Clark Station that was, I grew up in East Edina on Sunnyside Road, but I biked there. I biked to 44th and France. My dad would send me up to Dennison's Dairy Store, which was like, kind of a little bit next to Convention Grill now, to buy Spelmoni ice cream, and those are all good things. The neighborhood will change. We love where we live. We used to live over in Morningside, and now we live over here. My adult children, they're now adults, call it Kmart Trail, because I get up at 5:00 in the morning, and I just found out it's somebody's dad who's out there with a headlight walking at 5:00 AM. I'm like, what is that, you know, coming in my window? And they're out there late at night. By 10:00, nothing is happening. We walk our dog at 10:00. I'm a little bit nervous because it's not very well-lit, but I feel like our neighborhood has become the neighborhood of my childhood. The kids are out there all the time. I love hearing the flap of all the people that have outdoor rinks, and you hear that all at night. I love seeing the kids on their bikes. I love them on their skateboards. Every time, we have a neighbor, Sarah, who lives across the street, and I always comment to my kids, I love that they're out there with their kids every day playing soccer in the front yard. This is not a backyard neighborhood. Everyone is in their front yard. Everyone is walking on the streets. Tons of people have dogs, and I would like to see that character of this neighborhood that we moved to in 2004 maintained. It's a great place to live. Our neighbors moved to different houses in this horseshoe. They don't move out of the neighborhood. And so I think that really speaks to what the neighborhood is. And I really question, too, someone brought up, I think it was Chris, about the 600, you know, positive things. I never even got a postcard, and I live five houses away. The only input that I ever saw was a huge sign that's still there about using a QR code to vote whether you want one of three things. I'm not going to stop on Vernon Avenue with my phone and take a picture of the QR code. So I haven't felt, as a close neighbor, that we really have been spoken to, nor communicated with, nor asked for opinion. And again, to re-say what someone else said, it was MEA weekend. No one's in town. Everyone is somewhere else if they have young children, because it's a break. I'm a teacher. Everyone's gone. So thank you for your time, and I guess I would really suggest that you vote no. Not that there's not other possibilities for this piece of property, but I really don't want the character of the neighborhood to change. And everything that has been said by everyone else, it will change the neighborhood, and I don't think for the better. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others in person? Going once? Are you going to provide public testimony specifically? Otherwise, I would ask for you to...
I live in the neighborhood. Can I talk?
Sure. Begin by stating your name, and you'll have three minutes to provide public testimony.
I'm Jeffrey Lane, and me and Chris grew up in this neighborhood. I'm totally for this project because I see that it can be something more. I do want a restaurant, for sure. But what I can see happening is maybe something else. It doesn't have to be a restaurant. It can be a candy store. It can be an ice cream shop. It can be something more, something better. Do we have to have a liquor license? No. Is that what seems to drive people left or right? I'm not sure. I like how Chris brought up the fact that we could do something else that we can work with the city on, to make this node something we all want. Because I don't think a Valveen's great. I don't think an auto repair shop is the greatest thing for Edina. I think there's something better here, and I hope that you guys can see through this and find something that is maybe between this. Because I have kids that bike on the streets. I have kids that play soccer out front. We live on Jeffrey Lane. We are 10 houses away. I would never try to do something that was harmful for our neighborhood, and I think it actually will increase value if there's something cool there. So I hope you consider giving us the opportunity to make this place better. Thank you.
Thank you. Saying no, one more in person.
Good evening. My name is Tom Colbry. I live on 6004 Kmart Drive, about two doors down from this, and everybody has already said everything that I would have said up until right now, where I feel like I need to echo the comment that was made that the use of this current site is set. And if people want to change it to something else, they should have found a site that was zoned for that and gone there, because this is a residential neighborhood now. We've been there for 30 years, more than that, actually. We've raised our kids in this neighborhood. I just retired, and the last thing I want is to see everybody's property values tank because of a new change in what's used there, what the type of traffic will be, what the type of, who knows what's going to be there. We don't like having a dumpster with raccoons and who-knows-what running in and out of the neighborhood that's 100 feet away from our driveway. I think of all the kids walking around, it's tough to get a truck through, a garbage truck through, delivery truck through, as it is, much less with parking on both sides. And I have nothing against development, but I think we need to keep this residential. Thank you for letting me express my views, and I appreciate what you guys do a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else in person? All right. I will look to see if anyone has called in, and it looks like yes, so please.
Yes, commissioners, we do currently have two callers in the queue to speak. So operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller? So Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller?
Yes. Your lines open, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sue Attencher Levy, and I've lived in Edina for 63 years. First of all, you know, I don't live, I live on Arctic Way, Vernon, and I, unfortunately, I'm not, I live at Ground Zero, which I found really a little bit offensive, but anyway, I am very much in support of this. I find it interesting that we've had very negatives, and there hasn't been a lot of pros.
And while I haven't prepared a formal speech, I just wanted to voice how I'm very looking forward to this new establishment, this new restaurant at Kevin Keyes. Unfortunately, I'm not on Ground Zero, which I found a little bit offensive, but anyway.
Is that the end of your testimony?
Sure.
All right, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, myself, that, yeah. Anyway, I am in support.
Yeah. Yes, that is the end of our, we just wanted to voice, it seemed like there was a lot of negative feedback-
Negative.
...and wanted to call in, because we are so in support of this new restaurant going in at Kevin Keyes, and we look forward to the establishment, and I think it will be great for the community at, toward the west side of Edina.
Thank you. I think I caught the rest of that. It sounded like there was support, if I were, was to summarize that one. Thank you.
I'm in support.
Thank you.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller, please?
And just a reminder to, if you're watching on TV, to also, please mute the TV in the room with you.
Am I live?
Yes, you are.
Oh, hi. My name is Heidi Moon, and I live in the neighborhood, I live, actually, my corner of my backyard goes up to the Collins, I'm on Leslie Lane. And I grew up in Edina, moved away in my adult years, but moved back to 6009 Leslie Lane almost 10 years ago now. And I am strongly in support of the developments that the Collins are planning for, that the Kevin Keyes establishment. And I think the vast majority of the people that I talk to in our neighborhood on both sides of Vernon, and a lot of Countryside families are, and Edina high school families are very, very much in support of it. And I feel that, just like we see in the 50th and Prance area, having an establishment to walk to to get a coffee, to have a Bible study in the morning, to meet some friends, and, you know, not have to get in the car and drive, a place where our kids can grab an ice cream cone, and that the community can gather in, is a huge value add for having something on the west side, and how incredibly fortunate that the people proposing that development are, have some skills in this field, already proven their ability to create really community-building establishments, and a very high quality. And as I believe I caught Marty saying, he lives here. They are just interested in making their property value higher, the community a better place, and I see so many opportunities to have a place to gather on the west side, and nothing but plus. So I just wanted to voice my support.
Thank you so much.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller, please?
Okay, your lines open, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, sorry, I was having some technical issues here, but my name is Bobby McConnell. I live at 6029 Kmart, so I live just a few houses away from the Kevin Keyes location. My wife and I have been Edina residents since 2008. We have three kids who go to Valley View and Countryside, and I just want to echo what the prior resident communicated, and just strong support around this proposition and the idea of Marty and Chris Davis translating the Kevin Keyes location into a restaurant. And, you know, knowing that, you know, Marty lives a few houses away, and my son played on a hockey team with Chris Davis's daughter, like, these are Edina residents who have, you know, a real strong commitment to increasing home values in the area. And, you know, I do a lot of work with the younger generation, and there's just a ton of evolution happening, where people are looking for, you know, walkability, and wanting to have places in their community like what Marty and Chris are proposing at this site. And I think that, you know, as I'm hearing, just, and kind of taken aback by the amount of negativity being vocalized on this call, and again, as somebody who lives, you know, eight houses away from this location, I can't see this proposition doing anything but adding value to our properties. For those of us who have, you know, kids whose friends live on the, you know, east side, and go to Snuffy's and Town Hall on a regular basis, like, that hasn't negatively impacted the home values in that area. It just adds to the community, and as I think about, you know, I grew up, I didn't grow up in Edina, I grew up in Colorado, and, you know, what I've just loved about living in Edina since 2008 is the fact that the community were really actively involved in the Hockey Association and Baseball Association, and I just think this is such a pillar, this could be such a pillar of the west side, and I'm confident in the leadership that is invested in this. And, you know, I think it will just be a real value add both to our kids, to families in the area, and just wanted to make sure, I'm traveling for work, but wanted to just echo the support for the site. And every neighbor I've talked to has been nothing but positive about the location, a ton of excitement when they handed out the post-it cards. I know, I've talked to multiple neighbors who are like, oh, shoot, you know, I would have loved to have gotten involved in this earlier on. And so, you know, hearing some of the negativity around, you know, people who have retired, or some of the, you know, older generation who maybe isn't as in tune with kind of what the community looks like now, I think we just need to, you know, evolve and modernize our thinking a little bit, and trust that when you have Edina residents, Marty lives, you know, 10 houses from this location, like, is invested in this community as well. And, you know, the idea that he would want to, or that the group would want to devalue our homes, it's just kind of preposterous to me. And honestly, even thinking about our kids, I'm a front yard family. If you guys go by our house right now, you see three hockey nets and two football nets, and, I mean, we are out in our front yard. I love the idea of having a shop, you know, around the corner where our kids could pop over and, you know, get ice cream, stop by, you know, for lunch, or-
You're at three minutes?
...et cetera. Just wanted to, just wanted to share my support, and as a neighbor, you know, echo a lot of what people are saying around the positive vibes about the location.
Thank you.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller?
Okay, your lines open, please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Akeen Lobenya. I live at 6028 Kmart Drive with my wife Angela. I missed the first part of the call, because we were putting our three and one-year-old daughters to bed. We've been here since 2017, and love this neighborhood, and are planning to stay here for quite some time. And, you know, getting to know Marty and the plans that they, and Alyssa, the plans that they have for the site, we're very in favor of it, and quite excited about what it would do for, you know, not only the value of our home, which Bobby, who was just speaking, lives across the street from me, and, you know, echo his sentiments around kind of the younger family generation that's now kind of moving to Edina. I grew up in Edina, graduating high school here in 2004, and really, when we were looking for our home, we're trying to be on the east side, because we wanted the walkability of the east side of Edina offers. And I think having this site turned into a restaurant would be very exciting, not only to us, but other young families that we socialize on a regular basis with. We would love to have a community gathering spot. We find ourselves getting in our car and driving to other neighborhoods, and playing in parks that have, you know, coffee shops and things that we can walk to, and would love the idea of loading the girls in the wagon, and walking and grabbing a coffee, and then heading down to Bretton or one of the other great parks that Edina has nearby us. So very in support of that. You know, I also do a lot of real estate development for a living, and strongly disagree that the current zoning is the highest and best use of this property. And as a family resident here, you know, have concerns about another automotive-related tenant going in here, just because of the materials that are used in that type of operation. I would much rather deal with a little buzz around a community gathering spot, and, yeah. So very in favor, and happy to provide any further commentary as the time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have more callers in queue?
We do not have any other callers in the queue. However, there are a few callers on the line that have not expressed a desire to speak. So this is just a reminder, callers, if you would like to speak, please press star 1 to be entered into the queue. So Commissioners, I do recommend that we wait another minute, just to allow these callers the opportunity to do so. I'll check back with you in one minute. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller?
Okay, your lines open, please go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hello? Can they hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. My name's Terry Brown. I live on, in the Blake Ridge Townhomes, across the street from, from the site. I just need to say that I'm adamantly opposed to this, and I guess the one thing that hasn't been really discussed, although the traffic seems to be adequate according to the city, I'm imagining somebody going east on Vernon Avenue, trying to turn left into this parking lot, with traffic backing up behind it, and cross, traffic coming the other way, getting in the way of the turn, and I kind of see chaos in traffic there, just getting in and out of the site. So, all the other stuff about parking in the neighborhood, the views of the people who live nearby who think there's, there are going to be disruption, are the ones who ought to really determine whether this is a yay or a nay, and it sounds like it's a pretty, it's a pretty, it's a nay as far as I'm concerned. I echo everything else that's been said by some of those other folk from the neighborhood, and just want to cast a vote, an enthusiastic no vote on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do not have any other callers in the queue at this time.
Given that you've already given the one-minute warning, I am comfortable moving on, if you think that's appropriate as well.
I think it's safe to proceed.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the hearing.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion has been closed. So with that, I will, I will open it up to my fellow Commissioners to, I would say, first, look around, are there any questions either for our applicant or city staff at this point? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, could I ask Director Stee, or, Tea, excuse me, because there were a lot of questions about hours, and what Edina regulations are, and whether, you know, conditional use would be allowed, or how that would be handled by the city?
In terms of hours of the restaurant?
Yeah, hours of operation.
I've posed that question to the applicant, being that they don't know the specific use, so they don't, they're not proposing anything. Could be tied to a liquor license. It could be tied to these approvals. If you think certain hours are appropriate, we certainly can add those as conditions.
Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of approving, say, a restaurant is approved here, or whatever use, once it's sold and a new owner takes over, you know, how much of this is, goes with the property, or does it go for the actual, for this instance?
It would, so the use would go to the next owner.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
For questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Director Tea, just a couple of questions for you, actually. So when we have these types of meetings, where a new idea is coming forward, it has to get, you know, a sketch plan review, it goes on Better Together, to get a Edina, there is some requirements to notify the neighborhood. Who's responsible for doing that work? Is it the developer's job to do that, to collect that feedback? Or does the city have some role to play in, in the accountability of who gives the feedback, who provides it, like, who's responsible for it?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple ways. We always recommend and encourage that they reach out and have a neighborhood meeting before a formal application is made. We provide them a mailing list of all property owners within 1,000 feet. That's our notification radius, so that there's that part of it. Once they make a formal application for the rezoning conditional use permit, what's in front of you this, this evening, the city sends out public hearing notices for when these hearings are to be held. Those get mailed out 10 days in advance of the public hearing, so those went out 10 days ago. And the site, the project also gets posted on Better Together. That's generally about three weeks before the public hearing, after the application is made, and we begin taking feedback that way as well.
Just a follow-up. So essentially, if the developers wanted to get more feedback from a much broader base of folks, they could do that on their own, essentially. And there's no data points that says this specific, you know, this specific area, here's what the feedback is. It's, you know, what's on Better Together, Edina, which could come from anywhere, and-
Correct.
-whatever information is collected by the developers. So there's no data point that says, within 1,000 miles of this location, here's the feedback. Is that correct?
Correct.
Couple more questions. With the comp plan change process, I've not been involved yet with a comprehensive plan, I certainly hope to. What is that process like? Like, for example, if this was a new node that we would consider in the future to have a discussion, you have folks who live there, close by, that give feedback, and you have, I'm guessing, the larger Edina community also participating. Is there a way, or is it part of the process that who lives there has the last say on what goes there? Or how much weight or value do residents who live in that 1,000-foot zone have over what's got decided in that, in that area?
Yeah, it's really up to the decision-makers how to weigh input that comes in, you know? There's no written policy that says people that live closer have more of an impact. It's really up to you all to decide what carries more weight. You know, we're gathering as much input from the public as we can. It's up to, I guess, all of us to decipher what is and isn't more important.
Gotcha. Just one more here. When it comes to planned, you know, PCD4 essentially, that's, I think it's medium-density residential is what it's zoned for currently, this particular site. That would, you know, could you just list off maybe some ideas of what's possible with the current zoning that exists in this location?
Yeah, with the current zoning is- Yeah, with the current zoning is PCD-4, which only allows, it's, it's what all of our gas stations in town are zoned, so gas station, auto repair, car wash, those would be the uses allowed under the current zoning. The comprehensive plan has it guided for medium-density residential.
So, so right now today, like any entertainment-type things, that's just not in the cards, essentially. Residential, gas station, auto, just service-type locations. So nothing that would be a gathering place, essentially, would be allowed here currently.
Correct.
Thank you.
Please go ahead and ask a question.
I have a question for Director Teague. Is there any, like, regulations regarding obtaining a liquor license in a residential area and kind of outline the process of obtaining a liquor license?
Yeah, so there is a specific rules and regulations surrounding the liquor license that's granted by the city council. And there's rules about that, like that outdoor patio, it has to be enclosed, the fence around it has to be a certain height. I'm, I'm not directly involved in that process, so I don't know how the notification works, but it's about a, oh, it's a couple-month process, and it's a public hearing at the city council to grant the liquor license. And I would add, too, that hours of operation can also be tied to the liquor license as
All right, seeing no further questions, I will generally open it up to commissioners for comments and discussion.
Thank you to the applicants and members of the community for participating tonight. I found I was persuade, I found the staff report persuasive this evening, and without going through chapter and verse a lot of the content of the report, I would just say that, in particular, the number and degree of the variances suggested are unusual, really unusual. And for me, it's too big a lift, and I can appreciate the, the desire to work. The applicant suggested that they wanted the city to work with them. I can appreciate that sentiment for sure, but, you know, at the end of the day, what we're talking about tonight is, we can really, pretty much only approve or deny what's in front of us this evening. The second point I wanted to make is that the comprehensive plan is old, at least with regard to this particular site, but it's not necessarily outdated. And it's consistent with the use, land use next door. There's other multifamily residential properties right to the west. As a commissioner, we have to take the comprehensive plan pretty seriously. And just for me, as a commissioner, I have a hard time really imagining this as what the city of Edina would recognize as a neighborhood node, and that's the comprehensive plan change that would be required. So I thought, I won't be able to support this, and I would also recommend to the commission that at our next meeting, we take up the process of changing the zoning to PRD-3 to match the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Padilla.
Thank you for your presentation and love, no loss, great restaurant, and to members of the community for all of your input. I think on a kind of a micro level, as specific to the documents that were submitted to us, the parking was supposed to reflect the maximum number of staff, and I think that was tagged at five, which I have a hard time doing math on that. If you, if there's a bar in there, which was included in the drawings, and a patio, it seems like that's, you'd have to have more staff than that. Concerns about parking, delivery issues, trash, the noise of a bar and the late nights, and particularly the traffic in the afternoon, when you've got commuting traffic, school buses, and it would particularly be dinner, you know, your dinner rush or something like that. I think that would be an awful lot of traffic in an unmonitored intersection in the two driveways would not be conducive to additional vehicular loads. I walked the, I walked all around the neighborhood, I walked the property, and I do think it is not a fit in spite of the fact that, I agree with the 613 people that said they would love a restaurant there. I think that might be a great idea, but I don't think this is the plan for it. I do think, as Commissioner Alcar said, that the variances are excessive, and I do think one business does not a node make, so I think that's something we need to keep in mind And there was nothing about sustainability in your plan. At a minimum, I'd like to see separate dumpsters for recycling and trash.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, thank you. First, the city staff, I thought, did a very, a wonderful job preparing the staff report. I mean, that's a, you guys obviously put a lot of work in this, it was, it was very good. And my compliments to the community, the neighbors, you know, for and against this project. I thought your comments were on point. Not as heated as these things can get, and I know that obviously things can get heated, but I thought you spoke well for your, your concerns. Commissioner Padilla just made a, maybe I've heard it before, but I very liked it, is one property does not a node make, and it seems like I should have heard that before, but if, you just coined it, it's great, because that's exactly one of the things, is that it's not Valley View, it's not 44th and France, it's not, you know, Cahill. It's, it's a undersized property that I was always surprised, I said, what is this doing here? The original operation on Vernon Avenue, it just never seemed to fit. So this putting what's being proposed is too much for the site. The variances are too, too many. And I think there's a need and a want for something, and even the developer, I think, is sort of like saying, well, we're willing to fashion or shape, we need, we didn't know what we can do. I think that's exactly right. Find out what we can do and then come back to the neighbors and see, because there's obviously some very flashpoints. Alcohol sales, you know, and traffic are, you know, the, the things that seem to be blowing this up. So unfortunately, there's the, the fact that the staff has taken the position, lack of staff support, to me, it's too many asks to the variances. And it's obvious to me, it is a significant change to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I think this was a really good meeting. Lot of feedback, folks called in, it showed a lot of interest, you know, both for and against the project. I thought that was, that was great, and that gave us a lot to consider. Clearly, you know, with all the feedback that's out there, there's a need for something, you know, folks are hungry to go take gathering place. And when you go on Google Maps, you know, you don't see restaurants, and it, you know, once you cross, you know, 100, it's pretty much nothing there, right? And folks really want that. So there's clearly a need from the community, I would say, the broader community. However, you know, as we drill down into the residents that live really close by to that location, right, we use our comprehensive plans as a way to keep ourselves and the city accountable for taking action in certain areas. And I think what's being requested here is a little bit much for what it's zoned for, right? And so I think that's a huge factor. As I look at all the comments and the feedback, and that kind of ties back to my question on who's giving this feedback, right? Is it the folks that live there? Is it the broader area? How's it being collected? I think we have to be very critical about that. When folks, you know, bring forward, you know, 90% loves this, you know, well, who is that 90%? You know, and how, how did that get collected? I think we just have to look at that a little bit more carefully. I appreciate feedback, and I think it's important, but I certainly want to dig into that a little bit more. For the comments that we heard so far, I, I agree. I think for this location, you know, for what is being proposed, it's too much for this site. I think in our next comp review or through a different mechanism, we could find a way to get neighbors to be more on board, so we could do something that they would appreciate. So my feedback would be very similar to, to what I've heard tonight from your city commissioners, that it's a bit too much for this location. But I do think there's a need there, and I think we have to explore how could we address that, and it could be done in the next comp review. But clearly, you know, having a restaurant or some kind of gathering place is something that the city is looking for.
It is.
As I said at the sketch plan, this is sort of the kernel of a great idea in that I think people would like a restaurant in the area, but I don't think this is the best plan for You know, we have, and, you know, we have a lot of evidence of climate change happening around us, and the, a single-story, single-use building with surface parking doesn't really seem to make sense anymore, even in a suburb like Edina. So the city has adopted a climate action plan, and one of the primary things in that action plan is reducing VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled. And having a restaurant with a significant amount of parking is just, on a busy road, a county road, is just going to encourage more people to drive here. If it were a smaller-scale restaurant proposal, that would be very much a neighborhood thing that people would walk and bike to. You hear a lot about that, but I don't know how many people would do that with something of this scale, so I don't think that really makes a lot of sense. I do think we have to think about what Vernon Avenue is. I mean, we had one resident talk about the history of Vernon and how it was actually Highway 169 at one point. It's now a county road, so it's not some little quiet cul-de-sac. It's a major route through the area. So I really think the city needs to think about what we want to do with this road and what really belongs here. This, this use was grandfathered in because it existed before there was zoning. So I, I'm not totally against some sort of commercial use here, but I don't think this is the right, this is the right use for it. Anyway, the Vernon Avenue, I think we need to rethink what it means to the city, how we can make it safer. Again, the resident talked about trying to cross the street, and it was unsafe to cross the street. We have bike lanes on it, but, you know, they're not very comfortable to ride in because people are going 45 miles an hour on it. So for all these reasons, this is just sort of a, an awkward spot to have something like this, and I, without further planning, I don't think this is a good use. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
I think unfortunately that this is a cool and great idea, knowing the restaurants that the architect has designed, that it would probably be gorgeous and a really nice facility. I just think it's unfortunately the wrong site. I think it's too small to do what's needed. Otherwise, I like the idea of having neighborhood nodes, places where you can walk. I actually do think things like that do increase residential property values, having those kind of amenities in your neighborhood. But I just, I think it's a square peg in a round hole. The site's just too small.
Again, I'll echo. Thank you, everyone, thank you for the proposal, and thank you for everyone who came in tonight and called in. To the applicant, I, I do appreciate the outreach that you did and the creative approach that you took, but I also, I have a bit of disappointment, too, with part of the process, and I think regardless of the intent, what I'm hearing is that there are members of the neighborhood who didn't feel heard or brought along in the process. And I think that, that that's really important for things like this. And I think regardless, I also hear your ask back to the city, right? And I do want the city to lean in and prioritize some type of plan for this, right? Like even as the planning commission, we have the intent in 2023 to identify these, these areas of change, and so I think maybe that's an opportunity. But when the city council listens to this, I also think it's, it's up to them as well to ask us as the planning commission to drive a potential comprehensive plan amendment intentionally. Intentionally look at this area, intentionally study this area, similar to what we're doing right now with the Cahill district, engage the community, and, and really think strategically, intentionally about what this should be. Because what I'm hearing from people is that they're, they don't like it as, exactly as it is today, right? But I think that I'm hearing a lot of potential opportunity for this site, but also concern for this site. And so how can we bring more of the members of the community together to talk about that and to brainstorm and potentially come up with a solution? So that's, that's my hope for the city council when they listen to this. Any final thoughts? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend denial of the comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning and site plan with variances, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have recommended denial of this to the city council, but I know that it goes on to the city council regardless. So again, thank you, everyone, for the discussion and your participation tonight. I will give two minutes for the chambers to clear out, and then we can continue the All right, we will continue with our agenda here, if we can all come back as commissioners. Okay, so now we have our chair and member comments. So I will open it up to any commissioners who would like to provide anything tonight.
Go ahead, Commissioner Alkire.
Just not to belabor the point, but I would like us to, I don't know what the sense of the group is, but I would like us to change the zoning. So is that something, how do we, does the rest of the group agree with that, to PRD3, or do we put it on the agenda for next time? Or how do we go about that?
Yeah, so, yes, I think we should. We need to wait for this process to play out.
Oh, so it gets through the city council and then come?
Yeah, once the council makes a final decision, then I think staff would prepare the rezoning and send out notifications, all of that that goes along with it.
Okay, I mean, does the rest of the group think that's a good idea?
Does anybody want to do a project or proposing?
No.
And that's what would probably...
Yeah, that's...
Would go through.
That's why, to me, there's a sense of urgency about it. But I don't know what the sense of the group is.
My preference would be for the city council to ask us to potentially do some type of comprehensive plan amendment, or at least intentionally decide, because the feeling that I got is that it was never looked at and said, "We want this area to be medium-density residential." I think it was, I mean, I guess, I don't know, right? It was, it happened before I was born, so I'm not the best person.
Yes, I think that is very much so the case the last two or three comprehensive plans, but I think the initial guiding it to medium-density residential, I would, I would hope there was some thought put into it. At that time, you didn't have to match your zoning with the comprehensive plan, so you were setting the stage for what the city wanted to see in the future. So that's where I was just, and again, it's just speculation because we don't have minutes or the detail of what went into that 1980 comprehensive plan. So I'm just speculating that they thought the uses surrounding it to match that was more appropriate.
And I guess my then ask is, that was 42 years ago, and so do we, as a planning commission, want to continue on with that or take a step back and just consider it? And maybe it ends up with the same outcome, and it just takes longer, which I shouldn't be advocating for. But I do think, given that what's on the site today doesn't match the comprehensive plan, it's at least worth a discussion. I don't know. You were going to say something, too.
I worry a little bit that the infrastructure around the neighborhood doesn't really lend itself to supporting retail, because I would love like a little coffee shop, bakery type of thing that people could, but there are no sidewalks, there's no street lighting. So I also feel a little sense of urgency that are they going to be discouraged by what happened tonight? And then say, "Well, if the only thing we can develop is..." Are we cutting off our nose to sweater face? But that's just being hypothetical. You don't know what's going to happen, or what they're going to do, or how the council is going to act. But I do think we do need to change the zoning at some time, whether we do it in alignment with a comp plan or a more thoughtful, long-drawn-out process. I'm torn on that one. Sorry.
Yeah, just a quick suggestion. My understanding is that if we rezoned it, that that's something the city can do independently, right? And it's just something the city council decides on. But if we want to change the comprehensive plan, that goes to the met council and has to be approved.
Correct.
Right, so since it's already zoned that, since, I'm sorry, it's already planned that way, we could, we, meaning the city, could, we could recommend to the city council that it be rezoned to what is currently planned for. And then at some future time, maybe as part of this whole, you know, areas of change thing, in the future, the whole area could be looked at as a comprehensive plan change, which would be a bigger thing, talking to the community, you know, having a whole plan for that, and then that would go to the met council.
And does anyone know, is there any liability for the city that we change the underlying zoning after someone has bought it? With the assumption that it's going to be a different type of zoning? Do you know what I'm asking?
Not quite.
Could the developer turn around and sue us? Sue the city and say, "I bought this piece of property thinking it would be commercial, and you switched the zoning on me." Do we have any liability there? I don't know if we do. Maybe that's just something to think about, too.
Well, I do know St. Louis Park recently rezoned, it used to be a gas station on Highway 100 and Minnetonka Boulevard, and then MINDOT bought it when they widened Highway 100. And then the developer, or the owner, was going to come back and create another gas station there, and the city didn't want that, so they just rezoned it before he had the chance. So I guess it's been done.
Yeah, I think we can do it, you know? Somebody can always challenge that. They could continue to operate as an auto body, as a non-conforming use. But that would be it.
You know, just one comment on feedback. I think what confused me a little bit is the conflict of interest that could arise if the developer is collecting the feedback on what could be done on this property. It almost feels like there should be some independent city organization that would say, "I'm going to go out and get this feedback for you." Because you could always expand your reach, make the numbers look more favorable for you. Clearly, in this one, yes, you know, the neighbors and the residents really want something commercial here, like a restaurant. But I just kind of felt like so much residents who live close by or like in that thousand-foot zone were probably overwhelmed by all the other feedback that was collected from around the city. Because I think everybody would want a restaurant there. You know, if you live in that neighborhood, so you're going to say yes. But it's how do we get that feedback of who's in that thousand-foot in a very objective way? And not be something that's ran by the person who wants to put a property there?
Isn't that what the public hearing?
I think so, you know, to some degree. I think the public hearing is a great forum, but it still feels to me that there's a potential for a conflict of interest there, you know? Like, if I want to do something somewhere, I'm going to try to make that as favorable as possible and bring that information forward. So I kind of felt like something there could be done.
I mean, I think that, and I was talking to Carrie about this earlier, I think that there's more that we could do with our data from Better Together as well. Like, I would love to see every one of the 679 comments that were written in plotted within the map of Edina, color-coded, you know, red or green based on the text analysis, which, like, it wouldn't be that hard to do. And so I think that something like that could be an interesting indicator, because to your point, feedback that I heard is that there was a potential bias of immediate, didn't like it, but then the further out, when you're, when some of our comments are from people across Edina, to your point, how do you weigh that? And I think sometimes just a visual indicator for me is helpful. So I think that there is data there. But at the same time, I also know that we're not, like, our role as the planning commission isn't to survey and make decisions based off of votes of residents, right? Our role of the planning commission is to look at the documents, look at the plans that were made, ask questions, you know, potentially of, like, what was the intentionality behind the plan? Is this plan what the plan should be? But then, the way that we do change is through changing the plans then. And I think that if we're, you know, requesting that there's surveys or different things, that might be an opportunity where that should be more of a focus of the city council, working with their community engagement directors. But like I said, I think that there is still some opportunity for improvement there, too.
I personally think that, although I understand that the developer having a feedback process is innately biased, that's still their right to collect feedback how they want and any way they want, and we need to weigh. I think the city of Edina, the Better Together, is a really fantastic feedback tool that I don't think a lot of cities have. And going on over, gosh, 20 years in local government service, it's very difficult to get broad feedback. Community surveys, a response rate of targeted mailout is about 19%, and that's a really good response rate. So I feel that somehow getting in the business of surveying communities formally from the city probably wouldn't give us the feedback we would think we would get. I think if we did a thousand, we'd probably get 100 back. And it would, still wouldn't be reflective. And my experience has been, people often say they don't receive postcards and things from the city when in fact it's probably just accidentally been thrown away.
I think that's a good point. A question for Dirk Tatiq then. The requirement of a thousand-foot, why was that put in place? Why do we need to have that requirement?
Yes, I believe the state law says we have to notify within 500 feet. The city has made a decision to double it. So, but the basis of it is it's a state law requirement.
Gotcha, so it's more so to just notify, but not necessarily to collect feedback? Or is that kind of part of it, too?
That's what the, that's what the public hearing is, then, the collecting the feedback. And Better Together is our way of adding to, you don't have to come to a meeting that night, provides more opportunity for public hearing. So really, the public hearing opens as soon as it's posted on Better Together, and it doesn't close until after the city council has even held their public hearing. So it's open for a good three weeks.
But also, I think in terms of the whole feedback issue, we as a commission need to be more sophisticated listeners. You know, in other words, the survey that they put out was kind of a red herring in terms of, you know, what they were asking and giving to us in terms of information. I mean, they, the information we got didn't answer any questions that we had or anything like that. I mean, I know when I was looking through all of these Better Together forums, you know, 80, 90% of them were, "Yeah, I'd love a restaurant." Well, that really doesn't matter to us, right? I mean, because that's not the kind of feedback that's different from some of the feedback that we got tonight, both positive and negative. But I think we need to be able to discriminate some of the feedback that we're getting and understand, you know, they had a purpose for what they were doing, and it's not the same as ours.
This is such an interesting conversation. This is, I'm learning a ton. Just to add on to what you're saying, too, I heard from one of the residents saying that they were given a set of options to select from. And I think the wording of how some of those comment, feedback forms are put together could be, could be influencing as well. Do you want a restaurant? Or do you want low-income housing?
Or a car wash?
Or a car wash, right? Like, you know, you could, you could frame something in a way that would direct the answer. So in this notification range, I don't know if there's like a process in there, too, where someone has to review what's being asked.
Well, and I think that was kind of the point of Commissioner Padilla, too, of, and Commissioner Olson, like, they have the ability to survey, and there was two things, right? There was the survey that they sent out that had the 2,000-plus respondents, right? But that was very separate than people who responded on Better Together. And so we just need to take in the information with that understanding of the bias that it necessarily presents. And I think that that was evident in the comments that we received of people saying, "No, we don't need more housing. We don't need more affordable housing. We just need a restaurant." Like, I thought that was really interesting because nowhere in the proposal that we were considering were we weighing those two. And so it was clear that that bias had been presented at some point. So take with that what you want to Commissioner Alkire on how we'll proceed, but I think it makes sense for it to go to the city council, and then we can chat again. Any other topics for comments? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. So I think it was two weekends ago, I went to an electric vehicle car show. And pretty cool, right? It was at a church, I think, it was somewhere in Bloomington. And, you know, we were able to like tour different electric vehicles and everything like that. And the coolest part was an electric bus, an electric school bus. And so I was chatting with somebody, folks there, and they were saying, you know, "It would be great if, you know, you could bring up to like the school board, you know, could we consider, or, you know, having your fleet or part of your fleet be converted into electric buses?" And I thought that was a really cool idea. I'm not sure, you know, if that has been looked at in the past, but that's something I think would be, you know, really interesting to, you know, look into. Maybe not our commission, but maybe we could put a recommendation to the, to the school board to say, you know, to be in line with our climate action plan, you know, here's something that you guys could look at. I'm sure they have looked at it. But I thought it was really cool just to ride on an electric bus and know that that's a possibility for our city. So I thought that was really interesting.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yes, I've gone from beating the drum on bicycles to beating the drum on climate action. So I just wanted to point out two notable things locally is that we set a record for the most degrees above 70 degrees, most days above 70 degrees ever in the Twin Cities. So it was the longest stretch of days that the temperature never dropped below 70 degrees, and that just ended recently. And then, assuming we don't get any more rain for September, which they're not predicting any, this is the driest September on record for the Twin Cities. And then of the top eight, four are in the past 15 years. So, and then obviously, we have a category four, category five hurricane hitting Florida at this moment. And now the desert southwest wants to steal all our water from the Great Lakes. So we're, it's getting more and more a crisis every day. And so that's why I brought up the VMT as part of this proposal, was that, which is vehicle miles traveled or how many total miles are driven in the city. And part of the climate action plan is to reduce that by like 20%. And so really, we have to look at each project, I mean, to reduce that citywide by 20%, every new project has to reduce VMT, right? And so this was going to just encourage more people to drive. So that's a lens that I'll be looking at every project through from now on. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Carrie?
Quick update on council actions. So you recall the 727250 project, where you all added the condition about separating? So they went right to work on that with our engineering department and actually had a plan before the city council. What they did was that north-south road, they had a median in there, and it was actually quite wide. They narrowed that up, put the paths on the west side of the road, so they're completely separated with a green strip buffer in between. So, well done. They didn't, they haven't taken action on the project yet. That will happen at their next meeting. And the public worksite, there was only three members of the council present at the last meeting, so that was continued. So they'll take action on the old public worksite at their next meeting next week. That's it.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.